Okay, we are live. All right, thank you, John. I'd like to give just a couple more minutes. Hopefully, some more folks will come in. Everybody want coffee?
Yeah.
Yeah, we may need more coffee.
We have ice now, too.
Oh, yeah. John?
Hey, John, how are you?
So this is the fact sheet for whether to help measure. Great, thank you. This is just an outline of where we're going to go.
Those extra things in your packet were just from a meeting that you weren't here for?
No.
So just so you got everything everybody else got?
Yeah. I think that's part. It's like his car. Good. It's very warm. Have them come in this way. Disappeared. Hey, Arthur? You're in or out? We've got a short chat for you. Taking a long way all my life. Are you trying to? Well, thank you. Hey, how's it going? More excited than I expected. Oh, it's all right. That's thank you.
Thank you.
There. I mean, well, so. Hey, I would like to welcome everybody to October 3rd, 2022. A work session for City of Idaho Spring. And we'll kick things off here at 6:06. And we have one thing to discuss tonight, and that is budget for 2023. And first up, we have the police under general. Mayor, council. So I submitted a memo with this just because I wanted to sort of explain what some of the more grandiose, what look like changes are from the 2022 to 2023 vote budget. So what I'm doing is I'm just going to move down through the budget document itself, if that makes work for everybody, and then you kind of get to go back towards that memo. So the first item is we did eliminate the lieutenant position in 2022. So that changes, but we kept the position as an officer. So that's where that changes there at the top there. You are going to see a few of the notations where there's been some inflation increases, including it looks like there was potentially increasing dental insurance. But the big, the big line is 1030 50 108. That's the bigger one. And what it looks like we had done, and jumping back to the memo, there were a number of items that were included in the dispatch line. It was a dispatch and contractual services line. And that's where some of those monies, these monies were being taken out of in the prior budgets. So we really wanted to completely separate dispatch so it's its own. So it's a much more clean number to see. And so that's where there's this increase in the other professional services. We've also added a few things. I'd like to add some items to include when we remodeled the building, having the folks come in there every other week and exchange the rugs out, which there obviously there's a cost to that to cleaning those. You know, say police officers are getting money fees and we need to check those, those clean. So we did ask add a pest control. I thought it was a reasonable cost for the, for, for the year. It was not very much at all to have them come in quarterly to deal with an occasional mice issue. And we had something living in, in, out in the garage, out in the ceiling. So they, they dealt with that and I thought that was reasonable. One of the other things I'm really excited about, it's mentioned in memo there at the bottom that I'd like to really explain is called QHIP. And QHIP is would be brand new to the police department. I actually discovered this when I was doing my tour at Jeffcom. Basically, it's a, it's an application that would allow us to, whenever our officers had contact with somebody in the field and we created some sort of a report, whether it be, we can do it off of traffic tickets, we can do it off of our incident reports. Basically, what it does is it, we can send them to their, if they have a cell phone, to their phone, and it sends a basically a brief survey, like two or three questions, very, very brief. And it just says, you know, we can design it however we want, but this is Chief Nathan Busek. I understand you had interaction with an officer. Can you answer two quick questions for me? And, and so that's what that is. And part of the reason I, I think this is, there's value in this is we have a lot of officers doing really good things and positive things. And we want to make it easy for the community to be able to communicate that back. But by the same token, if we have officers that are doing something that could maybe use a little bit of work, whether it's training or they're having, they're having their own personal issues going on, or whatever that is to identify those things. It's a way for us to connect to the community. So we, so I as a, as a leader can get that information back so, so that we can really get a picture of what, what's going on. And to me, that, that amount of money for an entire year, for us to be able to set that up in our system, basically what it does, it just takes when we have those phone numbers, we can send that information out.
Do you have an idea, Chief, of what kind of questions you want to ask right now? What information you're in fact looking for?
Just really just the general overall feedback on how the interaction went. That would be the, the first thing. And then when I walked into Jeffcom, they had a, they had a big monitor. So we're talking, you know, 40, 30, 40 dispatchers working. They had a giant monitor that was scrolling what the feedback was. But as a, as an administrator, typically what you do is you do get something negative. That would be vetted directly with that specific employee. And the nice thing is, you know, we have the, so we have body cameras for those that don't see. And so it gives a supervisor the ability to go back and see what really happened because there's some people that we interact with that won't be happy, really no matter what we do. But that's okay. But it gives us the ability to see that. So I haven't really thought too much yet about it, just because I wanted to see if this is something that, that opposed to council. I think it's, there's big time value in this because occasionally I'll get like a, a nice email back on an officer or some interaction on a forwarded hand you put in their, their personnel file. But I think there's a lot of positive things going on. And if you make it a real quick, easy way for someone to, to say something about that, I think there, there's some value in that. And certainly it's not a, it's just, we, if we don't like it, if we think, think we're not getting any value in that, then we don't have to continue it. But I think it's worth going down the path and, and seeing if, if, how that goes. So that's what that, that application is. And it, it's underneath. I was going to forget it. It's a, it's a sub, it's, it's part of a Power DMS. Power DMS is a pretty well-known company that does like, like very, well, big company that does a lot with document management. And they, in fact, they, they run like the Colorado Post website for Colorado peace officer records of Power DMS. So that's what this company is. So it's a very, very, I guess, reliable, well-known company. It's not just a kind of a one-off. So I wanted to, to show you that. And then one of the things I wanted to, to also let me counsel where we paid a thousand dollars last year for peer support services. And we participate with the other emergency services here in Fair Creek. And what we're seeing is a culture shift in not only law enforcement, just emergency services in general. And people are a little more willing to say, hey, I'd like to talk to somebody about some issues or things that are going on, which is good because in our professions, we're losing people. And if we train them, you know, and they get experience and now we lose them because they're having some other issues that they need to work through, I think that that's, that's, that's harder, that's kind of hard to replace. It is hard to replace. So one of the things is we, we probably is, I think we paid a thousand this year and I had a meeting this morning with them and we're probably booking more like $2,000, which I, I think is really kind of a drop in the bucket with the overall budget. But that's, that's an amount that's going to, it would go up a little bit, and I think it's well worth it. The rest of these that are listed on your, on your spreadsheet are, are annual fees that we pay for other services like the Rangers contract, which is fantastic. We had a Ranger actually come ride with an officer on Saturday because of the recent passing of Bruce Snelling. So the county was sort of absent law enforcement. We had people from Gilpin County Sheriff's Department, Grand County Sheriff's Department helping. And so I asked the Rangers to, to come ride with one of our officers that, that day. And it's nice because it's at no cost. So and for all of our special events. Let's see what else we have here. So on the memo, it says a thousand. That was before I had the meeting this morning. It's actually can be 2,000 for peer support. And then we keep moving. I, so then moving down your budget sheet, 1030 5212, the training budget, basically we just moved the $9,000 that we had budgeted last year. That was in the uniform line. We moved that to the train line and that's the $9,000 of cost to send to somebody to an academy. I believe we still need to budget that this year. Our person is doing very well at the academy. We expect him to graduate November 1st and start his training. We still don't have any applicants for our one opening. And a couple of people that have called and shown interest are not currently trained. So we have had a few phone calls, but no applications submitted yet. So I really think that it's to the, I think that we need to continue budgeting that 9,000 and hopefully we can get somebody to an academy that will start in January of 2023. That's my goal. So that's what that number is. It's just moving from one line to another. It's not, it's, it's was in the budget last year. A couple of these do again, say, we've got some inflation increases on just some of our, our costs have gone up a little bit. I'm going to move down to, I think I'm moving to 1030 5330, which is the communications. Again, in preparation for a potential move, I know that we still have a long way to go if the city decides to move to a different dispatch vendor to Jeffcom. I think we need to budget that now because I know that we'll have to reprogram the radios, including not only the handhelds, but the radios that are in the, in the patrol cars. So there'll be a cost to that. That's the 200 to 300 dollars per radio. So I think we should budget for that, just in the event that we decide to do that, just even though we wouldn't start paying for that service until the following fiscal year.
So 4,000 enough to reprogram radios?
Right. It's, it's about 200 to 300 dollars per radio. And we have approximately, yeah, we have approximately 18 to 20 radios. So I, I figured that was close.
So you're going to have both Jeffco and Clear Creek available?
So when, yes, when they're reprogrammed, you can still set them up to scan the other channel if you're, if that's the way we set them up, which we would, if, if they were to not. If they were to stay with their own dispatch center.
Right. But you're going to need to work with them at times.
Correct. Yep. Correct. Yes, of course, we work with them all the time. So, yeah. Yeah. And so that would be the intent that we, is that we would be able to scan their channel and they can scan our channel as well. And so, and we can flip the channel to talk directly with them and vice versa.
So 800 Hertz or 900?
It's on the digital. So, yeah. Right. Right. So, yes, it's digital. It's part of the, that's what makes this even possible is the fact that after 9/11, the states came in and created entirely new radio technology in the towers so that you can move from county to county and, and still talk to each other. That's sort of fascinating. In fact, one of our officers, a couple were at training in Wyoming and they flipped their radio on and they could still hear the radio traffic down here in Clear Creek County, which they shouldn't do. They turned off their radio because it takes up radio traffic along the towers. But that just tells you what the technology can do. So. Let's see here. We are going to start a kind of a new thing with, with Carlson called Pizza with the Police Program, which is kind of a neat thing. We, we really, with our manpower issues last year, I think, I think, I feel like we were a little, we just weren't as present in elementary school. So I, I think it's worthy of, they're going to Sergeant Frost and Officer Baylor, both SRO trained. They'd like to start this program. I felt it was worth the, the few hundred dollars to add to the, to budget to pay for pizza. And they're just, they basically go sit with a class and get to know the kids and spend some time with them. And I, I just think there's some value to that, especially in the current environment with our profession.
Do you, do you have a particular age group that you're going to do that with? Because I thought when, when the school moves to the larger building, it'd be a good opportunity to bring the other two elementary schools in at the same time and maybe just pick an age group that you think would be more receptive. But I think it's a great idea.
Right. I think for right now, they were planning on meeting with every single class throughout the school year, so.
But just Carlson.
Just Carlson.
Yeah, there's two other elementary schools that would be great if we get outreach in a larger capacity.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
You know, but, but, but obviously when you have a bigger building, you know, you have your room to, to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good, that's a really good idea because I'm going to sure if the other communities are probably not doing that.
Evergreen, maybe at King Murphy, but it would have to go through the school district. So I would say probably not. And then Georgetown, I don't think so.
Right. Okay. Uh. Again, a few are gas and electric. Just like everybody. And then the uniform budget obviously went down because we moved the, the academy cost out of that, which is the 1030 60 30. And then, uh, so the uniform one. And then the other one that there's some cost associated with it that I'm, that I'm asking council on, that part of the memo is the 1030 60 40 occupational equipment and safety budget. So what we're looking to do is we have an old ballistic shield that needs to be replaced. It's, it's extremely heavy. It's, it's, it's something that obviously is, is a bit archaic. The technology now is much lighter and more portable as far as ballistic material. And so it really needs to be replaced. And eventually our goal at the, at the police department, my goal would be to actually, these things do last like 20 years. These, these shields, they, they're very well-built. Is to potentially look at buying a shield every year to get one in every single police car. And the reason being, dealing with the interstate out here, there's oftentimes situations, whether it's somebody that's suicidal or some situation, and even dealing with things we deal with in homes or in mountains, it's having a shield is just becoming almost like a regular piece of equipment, equipment that officers will grab when they're going to something that is involved weapons. So, and that protects our, our, our officers. So that's my goal is to eventually look at just buying one every year over the next, you know, five, six, seven years until we really have one in every patrol car for the officers. It's, it is a low-use item, but certainly when I, you know, I, they needed a shield last week, the deputy has needed a shield on a, on a, on a call. And so our officers were coming back, trying to grab our shield. So it's, it's not that uncommon that we need that kind of piece of equipment. The next thing is the wrap restraint device. That's currently, it's, it's a device I'm familiar with in my prior agency. Basically, what it does is it gives you the ability to, people are sometimes combative with us that we're trying to take to the jail or to the hospital. And currently there's a lot of negotiation that goes on, which is fine, but some people under the influence are, are having other issues or combative. And basically what it does is you, it wraps around their legs and it sits them up and you put a top over and you're basically, they're in a sit-up position and they're immobilized. And the reason that is, is because they found that when you have people not sitting up in a position, that can lead to problems as far as people's breathing. So it's a, but again, a device I, I, I used for almost 20 years in my, before I came here. Every shift had two of them. And when you're, and there's also sort of a foam thing that you put on their heads so that they can't hit their head. Sometimes people want to hit their head against cage and things like that. So, so the jail currently has that device at the jail for people that are uncooperative, that they need to move people around. It's, it's, there's a cou- a couple of other things. So if somebody is uncooperative, they don't want to get into the back of a police car, it, it leads us to potentially using force with people. And they're handcuffed. And if they're handcuffed and now you're using force with people, it's, it's not best practices. You know, it, it's, 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 there's a potential you may have to use force with somebody in these handcuffs. It's just, it can happen. But the bottom line is we live in a world where we need to, we need to, there, we need to outsmart people, you know? That's what I like to say, not have to outmuscle people. So there's a cost associated with that. In fact, I'd like to eventually have my hands on four of these devices, but we'll start with one because we need to learn how to use that. But with that, I'm going to skip past the firearm cleaning tube and jump to the, the three vehicle full cage retrofit. And I've explained it to the officers and the vehicles that the council approved last, last week. We're purchasing, we're, we're getting full cages. So the, the days of having a half cage, if you're familiar, a half cage is, it's only half of the backseat where you put the prisoner, which is fine if people are cooperative. But unfortunately, people are not always cooperative. So the, the officers, the patrol officers should have full cages so that when you put somebody in, in a device like the wrap, you can, you lift them up like a suitcase and you put them in the back and you put the seatbelt across their torso and that now they're transported. And there's not like this trying to, there's a lot of, well, there's a few situations where I've seen officers in, in long debates and then people stiffening their bodies and not trying, not getting in the car because they won't sit in this little closet space. And it's, it's, and, and I don't, I'm just not a fan of using force when people are in handcuffs. It's just, I'm just not. So I think it's the right thing to do and I think it's the right direction to go. But we need to retrofit three and then three new cars that we're getting will all have that. So we'll have six vehicles that will have that ability. And the sheriff's department also has vehicles that have half cages. So they're sort of in the same boat. I've had discussions with their leadership. I, it's something that maybe we need to look at and consider since we do work so closely together. So, because my fear is that we're going to end up being the transport cars for the sheriff's department because we'll have full cages, right? So that's okay. So that's what that is. It's a one-time purchase. And then the last thing I'll, I have on here is the firearm cleaning tube. It's sort of interesting. The, uh, you know, our clearing tube, I apologize. So some people get confused. They think that you shoot into this, you, you don't shoot into this. It's, it's meant to catch the bullet if you inadvertently fire a firearm. So right now, when we unload our firearms, if we do an inspection at work, or we had somebody bringing a loaded gun that they found on the side of the road last couple weeks ago, we need to have a safe place to actually unload a firearm and then just in case it were to accidentally discharge, the round goes into this device. And that, this device, it's just a tube that's ballistic, ballistic material. And right now we don't have that. So.
Is it more than one-time use?
Meaning, yes, because you're not, you're not supposed to shoot into it. That's only, so depending on what you purchase, if you do have accidental discharge, you may have to replace it. But I doubt that.
Okay.
I doubt that. So.
That seems like a reasonable question.
It's really, it's best practices. Most police departments now, you, you see those, like when you go to the sheriff's department, of course, they have, they have that by the jail in case somebody goes, wants to unload their firearm before they go into the, to the jail, they have to put their firearms away. You may sure, some people will unload them and some will just put them loaded into a lockbox.
Gotcha.
So.
I like this idea.
But this is, well, I was, for example, this gun was brought in and I'll be home eight, I'll be done.
You're fine.
Well, it should be all right. I don't need to figure passes.
Your time.
So, uh, and, and so it's rusted out. It was found along 103 and it was rusted. It must've been there for probably a few months, maybe six months? I don't know, for a long time. And it was, the magazine was in it. I'm sitting there, I went out to the garage. And so I'm, I'm making sure that I'm being as safe as I can in the garage, but I'm trying to like hit the slide back and I'm thinking, I don't want Cindy ducking for cover because I should be using, you should have ballistic, the tube in case something were to happen and go wrong. And that's just normal. So that's what that is. They're, unfortunately, they're a little bit pricey, but again, it's a one-time cost and it, it would last forever, really. So. And then the rest of this budget, there really isn't any other changes overall, bottom line, at least on this, and this is before any sort of consideration for pay increases or anything like that. It's about a $41,000 when you add, when you add these things up. Ask, uh, can I do that now, right? I think some of this money was already things that we were paying for. So I don't think it's a, but it's a, it is an increase of 41,000, 842. So a 2.8% increase in the, in the overall budget for the police department. So chief, those items that are capital items will come out of the improvement fund, not the general fund. So it won't be in your operating budget, it'll be in the capital.
Okay.
Vehicle, some of that equipment, the more expensive for them.
Okay.
But I think the increase in your operating budget is even less, probably, yeah. The others are one-time expenses.
All right. Any questions for chief?
Yep. Sounds like it's a more class.
You know, as far as that, I think it's a great idea, the feedback, but probably nowadays, I think you're going to get stuff that's really exaggerated and negative, like, you know, as long as you have a way of clearing that, you know, because you, I mean, and I'm glad you wouldn't, you know, I, but, yeah. Well, I'm going to, I, I used to, like, send a ticket for $4 and, and people would be outraged because they were more outraged at themselves. And I think a lot of what you do is people, oh, you're, they're angry, they're angry. That position. So I, I hope you get good feedback, which you should. You're a good job. I'm just concerned that if a negative one comes in that we have the opportunity to make sure that really isn't what they're saying.
Right. And, and again, I think, I think it's worth the try. And I think the, the thing that they had at the dispatch center, again, they had, there's, there's some sort of AI that is, our system tells, telling them, here are the positive comments. And so if there's something negative, that goes into a different mold for a supervisor to take a look at. And literally, it takes us five minutes to look at body camera footage just to see what that interaction was. And I, I don't disagree. If somebody rants on that, then we can vet that pretty quickly and, uh, really can keep the data, too. And uh really can keep the data too. And part of part of me, I I I don't hesitate. I'll I'll call somebody. I'll say, I see that you ranted. If you want to come sit in my office and watch the body camera footage, you're more than welcome to do that. Because that's not what that interaction was. Uh but I'm just telling you.
But they will, because that's the beauty of the whole survey. I mean, I think I agree with Art, you know, that you're setting yourself up for failure and successes. But I think it's a good idea, even if after a year you're like, okay, I didn't really, we didn't gain anything from this. And then maybe review. Sure, the outcome for after the year. Yeah.
Oh, I think it's a great idea. I compliment for.
Yeah, but you guys, I hear and I see all, I see a lot of like the positive interactions that are happening. I I s- I. So I I I think it might be, I think you might be surprised. I actually think you might be a little bit surprised.
Oh, I I hope so. But I used to read surveys and write them and give the results back. And these are just scientific um scientists.
Right.
Like the most bland people literally on the planet. And they had some things to say. You're like, wow.
Right.
He had it in him.
So, yeah, no, I appreciate that. I I think it's worth the the try and.
Oh, I agree.
Well, and we'll see.
One observation I might have on that feedback system is I think you're much more, you're you're certainly. We all know that it's human nature, if you had a bad experience, to complain. You're more motivated. People are more motivated. Will take that job to complain. And I think with this immediate feedback request, I think you're gonna capture some of that positive feedback. Because people may not be so quick to compliment or to take the time, but they might with a quick survey say, you know what? That was a great experience. Thank you. Whereas we know we're to hear from the folks that were really have a bad experience, they're gonna be called. So. So I think, as you said, Chief, I think it's gonna be interesting to see what this survey does yield.
Right, right. Yeah, and I I'll be curious as well. So I I think. I think it's worth the the a little bit of investment to see where this sort of takes us. And again, if it if it seems like it's not productive. And then there may be other issues, but yeah.
Considering cost, I mean, also two point eight percent increases. Cost of your weapon.
Yeah, I I think it's, I think it's decent. Again, not including if there's any sort of. Uh salary increase.
Oh, yeah.
I appreciate that.
All right. Any more questions for chief?
There are two other items that listed under police because they're not, well, they're police related or public safety related. One is uh the police pension fund and that is a separate fund. And the police officers. Receive a pension, which is different than all other employees who are eligible. Eligible to participate in the regular retirement program the city offers. But the uh this is a defined pension program, which is geared towards fire and police. It's a fire and police pension. Association. So that is a separate fund. It's a relatively uh small amount in that fund, but it is a separate fund. And the other item of the general fund is uh fire. And um this is for the agreement that the city has with the third grade fire authority. To pay a um annual fee for fire protection. And uh the amount is is very close to what it was this uh this year for next year. So it's it's.
Yeah, but looks like it's just inflationary kind of increase.
Exactly. So I just put that in there um just as a by the way. The IGA does need to be renewed by the end of the year and that is something that we'll be coming back to council for further consideration. But it is still being discussed.
So the evaluation per recount went down?
It went down slightly. Yeah, yeah, went down slightly. Yeah.
If that is the actual number we just got from the fire department, I just placed it in. Yep. Not much, but a little bit.
All right. Any questions on those two items? Okay, and we'll move to a general fund administration.
Should I throw it over to John?
I was gonna be in the same basic tech as. Um starting there in hourly salaries, we had our council approved us to apply for our best and brightest from Department of Local Affairs this year. That's the program I came through. It's a graduate fellowship um that can bring some capacity to the city. Um we're invited to apply again for a new one next year. And I think it's a good idea. There's a couple of projects that we have coming on that I think would be really helpful. To have some additional hands on for. One of them is managing the marketplace and downtown operations and community promotion. But there's some other work here that I think could be really helpful to have another person around for as well. So I put that in there. The best and brightest program. Is pays approximately a forty five thousand dollar salary to the person over two years, but the city only pays ten thousand. It's like a four year program. So you pay ten thousand a year for the forty thousand dollar salary. So it ends up being a pretty good deal for us.
Just clarify, it's actually, it's uh three years. It's ten thou- they changed it up a little bit. Uh so next year, we're we do match for a best and brightest, it would be in July. And so it's only half the year. So it's ten thousand. Next year would be twenty thousand, uh the following year would be twenty four. And the following year, twenty five would be another ten thousand. So total, as as John said, the total, our match would be about forty thousand. Over those uh three year, which is actually starting big year and ending big year, the third year.
And that's not even in the realm of mental age.
That's right. They're looking, these graduate students are looking for for the experience and it often leads to uh. Other opportunities.
Sure.
In two one oh five planning services, our comprehensive plan was completed in twenty seventeen and it's time for an update to that plan. And so we budgeted fifty thousand dollars there. Um depending on how comprehensive that update is, that could be, that's pretty close to the ballpark of what it should be. There's also some planning grants available and dollar up if you need additional funding.
Just add one to that. I just spoke with Jared about this today and. Uh suggested that, you know, it might be as much as a hundred thousand to to update our comp plan. So one thought is to. Start this project mid year, budget fifty thousand and then finish it up in uh uh twenty twenty four. Uh no, yeah, twenty four, definitely. So um so that's.
Like a twelve eighteen month process.
Exactly. Yeah, it's a big process.
So it's a whole plan?
Yes.
Yes.
This eastern, western and.
Be be the whole, yeah, the whole comprehensive plan. Yep. So it'd be a big project.
They have to do it every?
We're each, the goal is trying to about every five years. We're pushing a little over that. So.
I've been on it. It's it's a big deal.
Yep. We last had it updated in seventeen. Our last happened in this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Five, six, seven years.
That's exciting. Six years.
Yep.
In fun, in uh account fifty two oh eight, one thing that we've noticed since COVID, uh we've come back from COVID is that these bathrooms get used very frequently. Up here by the public and that's a good thing to have them publicly available. But currently they're only getting cleaned once a week. And it would be nice to consider if we could clean them maybe a little more often for our staff's comfort and also for the public comfort. We try, but it's just sometimes in the summertime, it's a lot.
The answer to you guys, I don't really think you should have people that are not like from out of town in your bathrooms, frankly. I mean, it to me, it's a safety issue, not, it's a safety issue. We have public restrooms that are out there, that are, you know. For the public. Uh it makes me uncomfortable that you guys have to have that happening.
It can.
That being said, I understand that you wanted to be clean. I work at the library.
You know, sometimes. We can look at what that would look like too, but we we just like to come up, you know, similar to what Chief said. This building does have quite a few bodies in it.
Yeah.
We have tried really hard to keep up with what happens here and sometimes it just can be a lot. So. We were thinking, you know, it gets cleaned on Saturday nights currently and they spend four hours here and four hours at PD. And that might be something that we could should look at. Um employee incentive. I I just wanted to raise an idea. I didn't really change the budget for this. Currently, the employee incentive that we offer is rec center memberships. For all employees. So you can come to the rec center whenever you like. And it's a really great um program. And I don't really want to get rid of it. But what I did want to propose is that we do have some employees that can't take advantage of the rec center just because the way their shifts work. And things like that. And some other companies now do things where you can have that credit for what that would cost the year to put towards another activity. That's kind of um health oriented or something to that effect. So you can get running shoes. You could go to the gym by your house or whatever the case may be. And I was thinking that we might be able, especially just because of the market we're in and we have some difficulties. Me, you know, it's really important to us to make sure that every employee feels like they're valued. Now I was thinking that might be a way to increase our. Um participation in like some of those health based incentives is to do something where where maybe you could have that choice potentially.
That is a really good idea.
It's an excellent idea. And I we I had the same issue with the the lift tickets for leveling. I don't ski. Everybody got lift tickets and I was like, okay.
Doesn't help.
Doesn't do me any good. So I agree a hundred percent. I think it'd be great.
You know, massage or something like.
Anything that was in the health realm that kept you stress free, that'd be great. Yeah.
Okay. Um in fifty two twenty five boards and commissions, one thing that we have available to us that we could take more advantage of is the card or municipal league. They have an annual conference, which is great. And all of our boards and commissions are eligible to go. A lot of cities actually closed down to bring their staff and their elected officials to the conference. And I'm not necessarily saying we do that. But I would love to bring planning commission and variance board and HPRC and as many council members as seemingly possible to that conference. Because it provides like a wealth of information and networking opportunities for people. So you can talk to other communities about, you know. What they do for utility billing or whatever the case may be. But it's a really good opportunity for elected officials to to mingle essentially. And so I was thinking it would be really great to build up our attendance at events like that. And so I wanted to. Provide a little bit more money for that purpose in that fund. So I bumped it and I think, you know, again, that's one of the ones that I'm just kind of proposing. But I think the more that we engage in our community, the less we have to reinvent wheels, the more we can kind of see what's working and apply it here. So it could be something that's valuable. Um I think fifty three oh three, we had a slight increase in phone rates. I would like to look at our um. Our voice, which is voice over IP phone system again next year. I think it's been a couple of years since we implemented it. And there are some opportunities where we might even be able to make that go away. But we need to do a little bit of work to see if that's possible. We have this thing called Microsoft Teams. We can use that to run our voice system through. But with our current contract, I think that's approximately what we should see for phone rates. Um dues and publications, uh ICMA registration for Andy and I are in there. There's also several other dues for. Um other employees. And then there's some publications that come to the city like the newspaper and things like that. And that we increased slightly. Uh just based on on staff dues that are required. One of the things we're trying to do is build some staff development administration and. Um one of the things is, for instance, Kelsey joining the GFOA, which is a finance organization, which has some training opportunities. Kelsey Wonder and Patty are eligible for uh the clerks organization. There's a kind of a waiting period that's involved with how that works. So we want to make sure that they're participating in their professional organizations and becoming and having those educational and networking opportunities. Um on payment processing fees, that one's a little bit hard to say exactly what it's going to be. We have the new payment portal that'll be coming online soon. And I think we're going for January first, just so it's a good clean date. I think it's actually gonna be significantly less than that because everything is. Is built into the system and we saw that when that came to for approval. But I just wanted to be careful and make sure that we had it covered. In there. Um electricity and gas, which is six thousand one, a slight increase there as well for just the rate increases. Um flags, I we we work with Danny Tomlinson to make sure that we have flags across the city. We just put an order in today and it was approximately the same as the twenty twenty one cost. We hadn't known that here yet. So I think next year we may. We may not actually need to buy flags next year, but that's seven hundred and fifty dollar range is about right for those. Um seventy ten office equipment computers. We have significantly improved our ability to operate remotely because of COVID. All of our staff has a VoIP phone, which was just talking about, that lets them answer city hall phones anywhere. And one of the things that we could do that would improve our our kind of resiliency here is to make sure that all the admin staff. So Patty, Wonder, Kelsey have laptops. Um we don't need to get really fancy laptops, but they all have currently desktops that are. Are aging at the moment. And I would really like to have them be portable so that they can work from home if they need to. We've had some conversations with council and with them as well about potentially changing the hours or changing how city hall works. So we could work more into the evening and early mornings so we could catch people before and after work. And having laptops would allow us to continue to answer the phones if we did have a time period where like city hall was closed. And so that's one of the things that. I wanted to consider. Um I think Andy and I think are both. In our uh our schedule are both scheduled for new laptops this year. And Jared is also on a desktop. It would be nice to have him have a laptop as well. The other thing, these desk chairs, I think most of the council chairs are kind of getting to be a little bit old as well. And I was thinking you might want to start thinking about replacing those. And then the last one is Patty's desk is is um it's time for it to be replaced. Um in the seventy eleven computer software, VoIP alerts, which is the alert software that we're implementing right now. Um that would go into this one that was originally in the public engagement. And that's about two thou- I think two thousand dollars. Yeah, nineteen hundred a year annually and that'll continue, that price stays the same. But I put a bigger budget because we just found out there's a house bill that just came out. It's called House Bill. One 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 zero. And what it did was change the definition of discrimination. Um for people who have disabilities in the state. And so it requires the city to make sure that every single piece of physical hardware. Every single piece of software, every single document and every other piece of media that the city owns or produces that is used by. Um employees of the city or by anybody who comes to the city is ADA accessible. That includes our parking meters, that includes every PDF. The city has all of our video. That includes our our casel, like our finance software. It includes anything that we touch or any contractor of the city uses to provide service to the city. And there's a whole set of guidelines for what that is, what that requires. And it's kind of a big task. And what we're required to do is by twenty twenty four, we need to have a plan to become accessible in all of those ways. And there's some guidelines that were created. And we need to make sure that all of that hardware and software is is compliant. We're responsible for our contractors. So if it's found, for instance, that say the parking software isn't compliant. We can be charged like thirty five hundred dollars per instance that they find. So it's a really important project for us to begin working on. And I think one of the aspects is is just kind of working on our website. Which is run by the state partially so that they can make sure that the accessibility is there. But I put that money there because I want to make sure that we have adequate resources to put this plan together and to start doing the things and changes. That I know we'll probably need to make just to make sure that we're compliant. So that's gonna probably be something that we'll have to have future work session on as well because there's. It it's just gonna be a a really large project. And then in seventy twenty, the community engagement fund, there's a couple of things there. The first one is. I had originally been planning to do just some plain website upgrades to improve the user experience. We have a free website, but we can put some. What's called HTML overlays on top of the website um to make it a little bit more custom and make it work a little bit better for our needs. And I had wanted to do that with that fund. So I think we might be thinking about this accessibility project first. I think that's probably the first thing. And then on the engagement side, the county has been wanting to work with us on being the table, which is their platform they use for surveys and all that kind of stuff. And we could partner with them for about five thousand dollars to have an Idaho Springs page on that website, which would give us the ability. To host surveys or to um put community information or whatever we want to do. And they've been talking about that for a while. So that's another project that we could essentially do with the public engagement fund. Which was created to kind of answer that strategic goal of city council about improving our our communications with the community. That VoIP alert software, I am excited about it. It's been a little bit of a slow um rollout, but we are very close to having it live now. And it does a lot of that work too. So we may find that we don't actually need to do any of that. Um it just is a matter of how that rolls out. But that's what I've got.
All right. Thank you. Uh questions for Jonathan?
Are you gonna use a casel for.
Casel is like our overarching software. It's called, it's a, it's a multi-fund management software, which I know you are familiar with. We had to figure out how that integration will happen. There's a couple of it, there's a lot of ways that you can get data into Casel. And so one of the cool things that Express Bill Pay software. That integrates directly into Casel so people can pay their tickets or water bills or whatever and automatically updates it. The parking management system is going to probably be a different software that integrates into it. We've been looking at uh. Uh passport. Yes, passport parking, which is one of the parking companies. There's a couple of other ones. And what they do is they manage the system. So they have like. All the parking resources in there so that the person on the street, you have the citations, those have to get entered into Casel and then that would go into the funds. And be managed just like any revenue coming into the city.
You buy your blocks for different things.
Yeah, yeah. But they don't have like a, like they don't have like a. A parking block like they do for utility billing or cemetery or something like that. So we, it would basically work as just revenue coming in through the. The payment portal, but it does track citations. So we would do that. I guess that's what we do probably is. Yeah.
All right. Anything further for Jonathan? All right, then we'll move to uh community promotion.
Mayor Council, this fund has been relatively stable for quite a while. And we use it for a pretty wide variety of purposes. This has mayor commissioner awards in it. It has like the Christmas lights. It has. All of our events that we do and a lot of different kinds of work that we do within our community, our support for KGO, all of that kind of stuff. We've been having some conversations recently about the best way to accomplish community promotion in our community. And there's a couple of reasons for that. And one is that we don't want to market. At all costs for any reason. We don't want people here when we're already full. We'd rather have people come when. You know, it's a little bit more manageable. And one of the things that we've had challenges with this year is. Is frankly, just managing some of the volunteer requirements of this community promotion fund. I'll give you an example. Decorating downtown with flowers this spring was really difficult because the people who have traditionally done that. Were able to perform that job at the same capacity as they always have. And it honestly takes probably a good twenty people to get those flowers in the ground. It takes John's crew like all, at least all day, if not all weekend when we do it. And it ends up being a lot of work. Fireworks are the same. Fourth of July is the same. There's been the last couple of Fourth of Julys where. It's managed by, you know, the the PD is here and the Rangers and then Jared and I and Andy are here and we kind of help. Phyllis run the stage and all these things, but it's a very. It it's always a bit of a struggle to make sure that we have all the volunteers we need. And so we've been thinking about ways that we can really improve upon how we do this work and how we spend this money. And one of the things that happened last year is ISMA came to you, the Idaho Springs Marketing Alliance, and asked for a budget. And at the time, they were not aligned with the Chamber of Commerce. And to be fair, I sit as vice president of the Chamber of Commerce. And council gave direction that if. If and when such a time came that the ISMA and the Chamber joined forces. That maybe one possibility would be they could be an organization that would help make sure that this fund is used properly. And make sure that we have people to decorate flowers and Christmas lights and the whole bit. So they'd be kind of like our action arm on the street. That work occurred this year. The Chamber of Commerce is now an umbrella organization. ISMA sits underneath it as the downtown arm. Of the organization. There will also be an East End arm and then other organizations if they want to participate. But the idea was to create kind of an umbrella organization with nodes where it's appropriate so people with similar interests could talk. Um, I think that there's some real opportunity to talk about how we spend these funds and make sure that we're doing the things that we like. In our community and promoting it in the way that we want to and and still. Making sure that we have a viable and sustainable organization that can kind of back us up. One of the things I was thinking is that Best and Brightest Program. That person, whoever we hired, could do some of this community promotion work and start coordinating with the different organizations. We all know how volunteering goes here. There's a lot of people that end up wearing a lot of hats and it can burn them out pretty quickly. And I want to avoid that. I want to make sure that we have somebody who is. Has the time and frankly, the salary in place to manage all these different things that we have to manage. And so in this, in this section of the budget, I'm not proposing necessarily any dramatic. Increases here. You see miscellaneous and events, a slight increase and a slight increase, or not a really increase for KGO, but talking to them about their funding. But I do think that we should talk about how we structure this this fund in the future and how we. How we use it. And so that's pretty much what I've got to tell you about that.
Jonathan, the uh visitor center I thought was going to remain the same. I thought we had started in the earlier meetings.
We had, and they actually have some work that needs to be done to the building as well that they need to request. They were going to give us a budget and we haven't seen the budget yet. They're trying to get all the work finalized and so that number should change.
Yeah, I, because I've already spent eighteen thousand dollars this year on the visitor center.
Yeah, uh windows, bro.
Not well, there was the windows, there's elevator maintenance, there's fire inspections. Um, there's roof repairs, there's a number of things that they've. Uh, completed already in addition to the windows.
Right. The stairs on the. South side of the building need to be replaced this year, I think is the big project that they're looking at.
I I remember three, there was uh. The stairs, there was the stairs on the west side, which is the emergency stairs. And then there was a handrail we'd actually approved. A couple, maybe three years ago. Uh, and of course now Lee's gone, probably going to be more problematic with it.
I have talked to the gentleman. That's at the cop of Floyd Hill about the welding. And he was supposed to give me a quote by now, but unfortunately I have not seen it from the handrail. So that may still, that may get happening this year. So what's missing in events?
These are events that come to the city occasionally and ask for funding. One example this year was Rapid Grass. Um, but things like that that are kind of startup, oftentimes they'll write a letter to you and ask for funding.
Any profit making people I will vote for. If it's nonprofit.
We typically don't see any. I don't think we've had profit based ones. Rapid Grass was a community, pre-community event this year, so it's changed from what it used to be in the past. Um, and I think that's why, yeah. That there's a lot of changes that are happening right now and how. Events are happening in the city and it's something, that's why I wanted to bring up this idea that maybe we need to rethink how we're participating in those conversations. We have pretty, I mean, you look at the budget, it's a good budget. And I think we could use that money, I think, on the. On the organization side, you know. A lot of times, I'll I'll give you an example, liquor licensing. If you have a. A special event that has liquor, you have to have a nonprofit sponsor, but there's only a couple nonprofits, so it ends up always going to the same. People essentially. I think there's some ways that we can accomplish, but you kind of were just expressing there and build a, I don't want to call it a. Umbrella organization again, but something that can manage all these things that everybody can participate and be at the same table at, and we're not. They're not all fighting for the same scraps, but you guys can have some confidence knowing that you're putting money into the community and like you said, not for profit. Businesses.
All right. Any more questions on that?
One last note, fifty sixty West Ham on Minor Street.
Oh, yeah.
It's reached the end of its life and I think we should cancel that particular one. Maybe start that program in a slightly different way.
Moving on to a building inspection. Anything really to elaborate on this? Looks like it's very similar to a year past.
Oh, we've got the four points. The farmhouse, they have called farmhouses. They have the old football field. So they're expected to break ground, do some site work later this year and then construction come up out of the ground uh next year. So. So we'll probably see an increase there. We might want to bump that up a little bit actually.
All right, um, moving on to court.
Don't really see much change there.
No, if anything, it's lower.
Uh, to the parking meter. Um, we. You gave direction the other day to change the rate structure as is illustrated in thirty six oh one. That's gonna make it much more possible to um predict the revenue from the parking. That proposed revenue that you see there at three thirty five is based on. The transaction data that we have to date. So that's a pretty accurate depiction of what our revenue structure would have been at the old rate, which was two dollars an hour for three hours and then five dollars an hour. I think we'll see that probably double with the new rate structure. Um, under C dot contribution, I have six point three million, which. Is the amount contributing or that they're they're talking about contributing to the mobility hub. You see bond proceeds there of six point nine million dollars, which is all approximate. Both those numbers are. I don't know that they're finalized, but that shows you additions into that fund there. And then uh some work for design and engineering next year on that mobility hub.
So I kind of missed it. Is Chief taking over parking or? We staying where we're at? I missed the meeting.
We, we agreed at the meeting that we would put out an RFP for parking services and what we would do is is build a parking. Is is to look at, we, I guess that question hasn't a hundred percent been answered. What we wanted to do is see if we could get a better deal than we currently have and make sure that we can control the customer experience that we have. That may mean that we hire our ambassadors and have like a technical advisor who could help us with the program. But it may also mean that we're able to take everything in-house. I think that based on the conversation we had, it would probably be some combination of administration and police. Working together to build a, I don't know if we call it a department or if we just say there's a. You know, the parking crew or whatever it would be. But it would be two um kind of parking ambassadors and then a full-time supervisor person to manage the program.
All right. Any more questions on the uh park? All right, we'll go on to the street.
Well, mayor and council. Actually not a whole lot of changes in these, most of them are inflationary. For gas, fuel, um, parts, blades. Um, the only one. First one is the. Fifty one oh three engineering and I put unexpected projects. An example of this was when the previous mayor wanted to explore the possibility of four-way stop signs on. Colorado Boulevard. We did an engineering study on that. Um, when we looked at the. Different designs for Wall Street behind. The Oaks Lodge, if it was possible to reduce the elevation of that street. So that's the type of projects that. Really weren't planned that we did a little bit of engineering services on. Electricity and gas unfortunately just keeps going up. My understanding is that XL is going to have a fairly substantial increase in natural gas this year. The one we did change also is sixty eighty five. I found out that uh. When XL does repair street lights that have been knocked down, replaced or ran over. That we were charging that to electricity and gas. That actually shouldn't be. It should be charged to a different. Line item and I. I know for sure right now we spent. Probably close to twenty thousand dollars on replacement of streets and the. Lights on Colorado Boulevard. Um, of course, fleet fuel. I have no idea what. Gas in decent is going to do. They just announced today that OPEC is going to cut production again and.
You're right.
Prices should skyrocket again, so we just don't know. I really like it. So there's not a lot of changes in streets. Any questions on that?
All right, uh, any further questions? All right, we'll go on to parks.
Um, there again. Not a whole lot of changes in parks. Landscaping services I have contact, I have contacted. Again, unfortunately waiting for. Uh, quotes with buyerly tree to assess all the trees and all the parks. And treat them throughout the year and not just whenever we call them. If they need something such as the trees and for the library, they trimmed or they get some injections on them. They treated the trees in Citizens Park for needle scale. That's why the, all the needles are falling off the trees is it's a type of white little tiny bug. If you look very close at the needles, you see them. And that's what's killing the the needles on the pine trees. He still assures me that that Christmas tree is going to come back. I'm kind of skeptical, I don't know.
We'll need extra decoration or what?
That's a cause.
Do a different theme like a Halloween theme down there for sure.
That's the cause of all the brown even?
A lot of that's.
Behind my house, it's beetle kill. I had a guy come out and do that one.
On all the mountains around the city, there's a lot of dead and dying pine trees.
It's a, you know, it's a hundred and fifty year old forest. It's one of the oldest in the state.
Honestly, that's really pretty much the highlight. So there's not a whole lot of changes to the lot.
All right, any other questions for Jonathan? All right, we'll go to the uh cemetery.
No. Typically, Lou Howard does a lot of the cemetery repairs. And she hasn't had much luck this year getting anybody to install any more. Uh, concrete stairs that she's been putting in to get from level to level. And we typically, this time of year, if we can, she has a gentleman come up and do headstone repairs. Unfortunately, so far this year, neither one of those has happened. So I'd just like to keep that in there for the next year's budget, so we can try and keep up.
Just a personal note, I have done a tour with Lou Howard and I am just amazed at how much work she gets done for a few thousand bucks. It's incredible. I don't think any of us would ever have this kind of luck at our own. But obviously she has some pretty sympathetic uh contractors who donate a lot of their. Of their time is the only thing I can, I can come up with for all the stairs and things that she's had built. Uh, she's really done a remarkable job. Well, you have the Nissen uh Cemetery Trust Fund. Uh, basically no change here.
I really don't even know what the criteria is for the handsome trust fund. My understanding is it's there, but we can't touch it yet.
Yeah, John, I I had asked about the same thing, uh, not to split hairs with you. But we could spend the interest, which is like ten bucks. So, yeah, so anyways, I I asked the same question. All right, Conservation Trust Fund.
My intention was next year to use this fund for CRC Playground.
Yeah.
I actually have a meeting with. A. Playground contractor Thursday at ten o'clock to look at the playground down there. Um, the play surface at CRC desperately needs to be replaced. There's some equipment. At least one piece of equipment that needs to be replaced in there.
Is that the little thing that goes back and forth on the spring? We stopped buying this.
No, we we got those long time.
I know. We got rid of those. I haven't been down in a while.
No, this is the centerpiece that had the old slide that. You can no longer find pieces and parts for.
Right, it's a problem with the playgrounds, yeah.
And of course, the surface under the swing set is pretty much gone.
Yeah, that's all. All right. Any questions on the trust one? All right, the one percent street sales tax on.
So this one, um. As you know, we're doing engineering on Virginia Canyon, Virginia Street. Part of that will pay this year, part of it will pay next year. That was close to his his council approved, close to a. A million dollars in the region. And then we quit, uh, five hundred thousand asphalt curb and gutter. Hopefully we can just skip some of the other streets. Just a simple overwrite put on until. The, we come up with money to do projects. It's going to be a lot.
All right. Any questions about the one percent street fund?
I've got questions on most of these funds. Why is actual a lot higher than proposed? If you notice a lot of funds are, you know. Twenty two thousand dollars, twenty five and some are even more.
I think, um, give it a couple of weeks. I think you'll see some of those numbers get revised. We'll have a, for you in a couple of weeks, we'll have um. Everything filled in, all the numbers filled in, at least in. Drive form, and I think you'll see those adjust.
I didn't know if we were using some of those funds for projects.
All right, we'll move to the rate fund.
Um, the red fund is for Colorado Boulevard. We could use about twenty two thousand out of the. Um, the rain fund is for Colorado Boulevard, we could use about twenty two thousand out of the. Proposed uh budget for this year, I think I put thirty thousand in there. Um, we do need to do some more restriping on Colorado Boulevard and there are several. I think there's actually thirteen more crosswalks that could be. Redone on Colorado Boulevard next spring. I tried to get some of them done this year, but contractors are telling me they're not taking on any more work this year at all. For asphalt or uh striping.
All right, any questions on the rain fund? We'll move to uh one of our favorites, you are.
Fortunately, water fund, wastewater fund. Costs are increasing substantially in some areas. Chemicals have almost doubled since last year, chlorine, uh, sumaclear. Citric acid. Uh, HAWK. HAWK though not only increased their. Supplies for lab equipment and test equipment, but they also charge us a twelve percent surcharge on top of that. So everything is, is gone up substantially. Uh, we have, since we did do some of the uh. We have installed new instruments at the water treatment plant and wastewater treatment plant. And along with those, they're HAWK. Instruments. And they do the servicing on them. And they, they calibrate them and service them, which we're, we're required to have them calibrated. Several times a year due to CDPHE requirements. So that's one of them in the uh. The water plant, the fifty one. Uh, two oh nine is eighteen thousand dollars for that. Contract for the next year for instrument calibrations.
John, on the other professional fees, what's going on there? How come that jumped so much?
I, 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 I just want to say, uh, I know an important one. For the protection of reservoir is this fifty thousand dollar fire mitigation.
And for water, yeah, water, yeah, gotcha.
Um, I'm sorry I missed that one, but. You're correct, I'm also waiting for a. Quote on a lease to replace the. Programmable logic controllers for waste, for the water treatment plant. I did get a quote to purchase them. And there was a hundred and ten thousand dollars to purchase them. But that would mean if we do purchase them, that we would be responsible for the maintenance, the care. And then if anything breaks, we would have to pay for that. If we lease them as we do the wastewater treatment plant, then. We call them and say your equipment's broke.
And you come in with some sort of foreign giant.
I kind of plugged that number in there based on somewhat what we pay at the wastewater treatment plant. But that could be updated as soon as I get the. Quote, I quote, so it could, I'm sure it'll go down, hopefully it'll go down.
Johnny, you'll be free?
Uh, yes, I am. Again, basically the contract contractor office. Is uh, put that in two places in the PSC. I will correct that. But each operator has a tablet that they can log into each uh. Water treatment plant and wastewater plant remotely. And those are leased also, the skater lease is what. Uh, operates, actually operates the water treatment. Yes.
Correct, yes.
Um, and then. Sixty two oh one caustic sodium, selenium hypochlorite. And the next one down, the sewer clear goes, all of them gone up considerably.
It's hard to get. It's around a few times.
Yeah, whenever we, you know, Justin calls, they're like telling that. Get it to you whenever we can.
Yeah.
Which maybe a couple of weeks, it may be a couple of months before we get. Some of the chemicals, so we try not to. Get too far behind before we order it again. Um. Anything else on? The water treatment, water. Other than uh, distribution is in there also. We haven't had a whole lot of uh. Water main breaks or hydrants or anything, fortunately the. Two hydrants we've had ran over. We could just repair them fairly cheaply without having to replace them. A single high fire hydrant by itself is about six thousand dollars.
John, do you want to touch on the capital projects while we're in the waterfront?
Matty Dam.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Matty Dam. I still have not got a quote for that. And uh, the capital projects also. Will include. The Highway one oh three line next year, some on that, so. Um, those line items that are highlighted will be updated also. Um, the first one in the water treatment plant upgrades. Was actually about nine hundred and twenty five thousand. Pretty much what all the.
Well, John's looking that up, the Matty Dam project may turn into a project bigger than we were initially expecting. We thought we could do some repairs on it, but maybe more of a reconstruction. So that's why it's taken a little more time, uh, we also might have a, a. Grant funding source, separate grant funding source for that that call Colorado Water Conservation Board. Which funds projects, helps to fund. And finance projects for raw water. And this would be a raw water project as opposed to treated water project, so. Um, that's their specific focus, so we may be looking at that next year, depending upon the size of the project.
So you're gonna put a bigger line under the road to increase capacity of the plant?
John, that's true.
I'm sorry.
Are you gonna put a bigger pipe under the road to increase the pipe? Capacity of the plant, is that a number factor?
The, the plant actually right now is, that line is pretty much puts the plant at capacity. What's happening is the, the dam itself. Is just rock. And it, we've, after all those floods, it's pretty much washed any sediment that was in between the rocks, so. When we start getting low flow into the, the Matty Dam. It's going through the base of the dam and it's not building up in height. And when it does that, it's not going into the intake. For the, the Matty Dam. So that's the, the biggest issue that we're having right now with that. And as Andy was saying, that right now we're not sure. Could be anywhere from. Hundred thousand to depending on what we have to do. A couple million. And hopefully it's not at that point, but. It just depends on. The Army Corps of Engineers, if we can do rehab under a statewide permit. Or if we have to go outside and get a different permit. Then you're gonna have a division of wildlife and everybody involved, and that's gonna be. A long process and you're gonna have to have fish elevators and stairs and. Yeah, everything, so. But um, under the proposed water fund. Some of the projects that we have. Kind of outline are the Chicago Creek one oh three waterline design, liminally, I got a uh. Kind of a quote of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on engineering for that. The backup generator from Montane. The generator is supposed to be delivered sometime in January. So you have to put that back in next year's budget for ninety thousand dollars. Uh, the water treatment plant. Access road of Rockfall. Um, we put in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we've had. Some. A few rocks come down and hit the green tank. At the water treatment plant. Unfortunately, it's just put a small dent in the tank. But it hasn't broke the liner in the tank, it's kind of a glass liner in that tank. So we really need to do something with that, so that.
Like a barrier, is that what you're trying to imagine?
Rockfall, it's a barrier or something like that. Water treatment plant sedimentation and metering, the design and engineering, about eighty thousand. This is those concrete tanks, I'm sure that you've seen them up there that are open tanks. We want to start utilizing those year round and one. Big reason for doing that is again, fire mitigation. It's not just around the reservoir we have with fire, but. We have so many drainages coming in with the Chicago Creek that. We could never stop a wildfire, so the hope is that we can design this that if something was like that would happen. We can filter out most of the ash and carbon and organics. Before it gets to the water treatment plant. So we can continue to operate without having to shut it down. Yeah, so that's part of that, um, Matty Dam improvements. Um, flow meters on the green tank, which the green tank is the main tank at the water treatment hall. And currently there's no. Outflow meters, so we really don't know. How much water we're getting out into the system. So if we put that on there, then we can start making better comparisons as to. How much we're producing and how much we're actually using.
Do we want to know that? So we do, I, that was a long time ago, we didn't want to know that.
We've made a lot of strides.
And that's kind of it for the uh, the water fund.
All right, any questions about the waterfront? You want to get to John, can you tell him?
Uh, wastewater?
Yeah, wastewater, please.
Um, again, we have uh, some inflationary costs. Uh, the water treatment plant. Construction is finished, it should be made for this year. So that's, it's just. It should be done. We had. A blower motor. It's less than two years old, burnt up. It had the grit pump motor burnt up. So we're waiting on repairs for those, the grit pump motor. Uh, they made cover it. Under warranty, the blower motor. All of the words were purchased from a company called Arizona. Twenty five months ago. And uh, warranty was twenty four months. And they pretty much said. Too bad, you know, ours worked for twenty four months, I guess you guys are gonna have to fix it.
So we're gonna restrict it to Buy American?
No. Part of the, I mean, the, the project was, yes. For replacement parts, I don't see that we should have to. Um, unfortunately, I'd like to, but if we do. We may never get parts for it. So. The other one would say repair maintenance plant. Since we will be starting construction on the public works building, we were talking about going to key cards. Or access costs for all the doors, so that's part of that down there. Uh, filter cloth and headworks brushes are also in that. All the new equipment that we purchased. Of course, takes. Expensive replacement parts and filters and brushes that have to be reversed almost annually. Uh, we also have. New, the fifty two zero zero fifty two. Page two. Um, twenty five thousand dollars for a new hot. Maintenance and remount for the instrumentation. Waste water treatment, for new instruments. Uh, same thing with the skater tablets, wastewater treatment. Um, collections. Under wastewater fund. Again, we haven't had to make a whole lot of repairs to the collection system issues, we haven't bought a lot of. Parts and.
All right, lastly, uh, capital projects there. We're on the bottom page four.
So wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Um, I just stuck a number in there right now, we do want to get. Some concrete pads and that type of thing for. In front of the new building. And the other one, the collections projects was. For Virginia Canyon, I, I don't know, I guess we'll see where that goes with that project. Two capital improvement for the wastewater.
All right, any uh, more questions for the wastewater fund? Then we'll move to the sales tax improvement.
All right, well, the sales tax improvement fund covers uh, all departments. Uh, so there, it's not road related generally. Going down, um, touching on the revenues first. We are applying, we'll be submitting the uh, application tomorrow for a grant. From Colorado Parks and Wildlife for another round of trail construction at uh, Virginia Canyon Mountain Park. Uh, it's a approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant request. Uh, we also have uh, received eight hundred thousand dollars in grants from DOLA for the public works facility. So those grants have already been awarded and. Contract has been signed, so now um, that project, as we know, will begin in the spring. And should be completed or substantially completed by the end of next year. Conservation Trust Fund, uh, it's just reflecting that eighty thousand that John mentioned earlier from our Conservation Trust Fund coming over to the improvement fund, so we can do the playground project. So there are a few of the revenues I plugged in there, a kind of a. Being wishful thinking here, I don't want to lose sight of it, Chief, for saying that. You know, this is something we need, but it's a big ticket item, and that's the uh, vehicle camera system, so I plugged in there. We're fortunate to get a grant, I don't know if it'll be a hundred and fifty thousand, but that's about what the cost would be. And uh, we're, we're, Chief certainly gonna be looking for any grants that may be able to uh. Fund uh, in, in vehicle camera systems. Uh, going down to the expenditures, um. We're now replacing, uh, well, we're replacing two patrol vehicles next year. Uh, one was fun, one was in the budget for this year, we have two that are in the budget for next year, but we're not gonna get the other one and. The one that was approved this year until probably next year, chief, or maybe end of this year, maybe. No, it's, it's gonna be next year, it's gonna be as you described, it's gonna be next year, because they ended that uh. Not making those anymore, so we're gonna have three vehicles coming in next year, so. Uh, one again was approved in this year's budget and the other two are proposed for next year's budget. Well, let's see, uh, under park improvements, two hundred thousand. Uh, it's a guesstimate and for what would be the improvements at uh. The new play equipment at CRC Park and the play service. Uh, eighty thousand would be coming from the Conservation Trust, Trust Fund that's built up over the years. Uh, Chief mentioned earlier in his report, some of the police department equipment there. And um, this is capital equipment. And um, this is capital equipment, some of the items that you spoke about, so uh, these, those items are listed here, so I won't include those. Uh, we have uh, money plugged in there for streetscape mall improvements, uh, we'd like to uh, make some progress on some of the low hanging fruit in the downtown master plan, but that's still to be determined, but we wanted to have some money in there for that purpose. Uh, the community promotion, uh, the portable stage that John Kane has spoken about uh, the council recently, there's an opportunity to buy a used portable uh, stage, and that amount is about twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, there is a um, a match for the CPW grant that's listed there, twenty uh, twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, replacing the ADA ramp on the south side of the visitor center building, that would be a capital project, twenty-five thousand dollars. Library building improvement, um, landscape project, uh, we did, I did just get the uh, revised bid documents back from Kane Architects, and we're gonna rebid that project once again, and we hope third time is a charm. Uh, one will be for the landscape project that we spoke with council about recently and revising that project. And then a separate bid for the building repairs.
Thank you, Andy, that sounds good.
So that'll be going out to bid here shortly, probably this week. Uh, we have bid document, revised bid documents. Uh, public works facility project, that's our big project for next year, and uh, the bulk of that project will be constructed next year. It's about uh, about three million dollar project. More than that. Uh, that some of the other expenses will come out of this year. And then land acquisition, we always have a placeholder for land acquisition, the case there are opportunities that that present themselves for acquiring property. Um, city hall improvements, uh, we have the the spec or the the part, the project designed to redo our bathrooms here, they've been postponed for various reasons, but we'd really like to get those done next year uh, to make them more accessible, and they do need some updating as well. We'd also like to, as we spoke with council about this before, updating the council chambers, so uh, we gotta replace the rug, maybe moving the the dayas out a little bit to make this a little more user friendly. And also uh, reconfiguring the front office, so we do have money in for that project. And also, it's been a longstanding project, we'd like to make it happen next year. That is restoring the windows on this building, upstairs windows on this building, and also some of the exterior. Like a train sho- shelter built for the train out back here, we plugged in about a hundred thousand for that, we spoke with the Haynes about designing a shelter that would mimic to some extent the uh, train station, so it'd be an attractive looking shelter over our our train and out back here. And then uh, John recently brought to my attention, it's gotten kind of urgent trying to do something with the Powder House uh, up on Soda Creek Road that we really need to, we all know exactly what that's gonna entail, but we probably need to figure out how we're gonna restore that building, it might need to be moved, just not quite sure with that project, it's, that's great. So uh, so again, the 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 improvement fund touches all departments and um, so we have so far.
All right, any questions for Angel regarding the improvement?
We're not doing anything with ball pool this year.
Uh, we are working on the uh, master plan for that, and uh, John, we probably should put some money in for next year. Get some, some of that, once we put plans done, maybe start some projects there next year. We're, we're going after um, cooperation with the recreation district, going after a grant, uh, grants for the skate park. So um, that that would be a possibility, uh, but that, we need substantial grant funding to make that project go. And then uh, some of the other amenities that we've talked about, such as a replacement tennis court, um, pickleball court, basketball court, so. So we we probably should plug some money in to try to get started on that next year.
Sure.
Yep.
All right, looks like we're down to the uh, final item, which would be our twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-five uh, capital improvement.
So what this is, is a, is a plan, it's only, we only fund year by year, of course, but um, this gives a five-year outlook on projects um, that are coming down the road, and um, uh, this, if you have any questions on it, I won't, I won't go through it in detail tonight, but if you have any questions or comments on that, you know, feel free to.
Yes. What's a shared trash enclosure?
That is for the uh, parking lot here behind the downtown, in the, in the large parking lots here. It's been a long-term goal to work with the businesses and the property owners to establish a joint trash and recycling areas, so you don't have each property having its own dumpster and crossing the mall in some cases, and just to make it more attractive. So if we do it, you know, block by block, which is the thought, that we have a shared enclosure, and it it'd just be a lot better looking and also probably more efficient.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else, have any uh, questions on what our five-year capital improvement plan?
I always look at that as kind of a wish list, anyway.
It is. One thing I've talked with Lorraine about is uh, seeing if we can better tie our revenues into not just the next year, but to projects going forward, and really uh, that's where we need to be, and that that'll be a a big project, probably working with Lorraine to see if we can make that happen, so we have a better idea of how to fund things in the future. That'd be more than a plan, each year it'd have to be approved by council, but but you at least have a better idea of of the funding stream for us out, out here.
All right, well, uh, anything else before we adjourn? Anything else on anybody's mind? I want to thank everybody for keeping their eyes open, and actually, as far as finances go, I thought it was pretty interesting. And uh, all right, now.